Council meeting to order. The Chief of Police got a r- had to give it to him hard time. His 5th area call list to order and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance and Councilman Nixon.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state under God, one individual.
We don't have a really robust agenda tonight but we're going to move some things around so if you have your agenda I'll just let you know we're going to have an invocation and then we have a couple of presentations and then the council needs to go into executive session because we have an outside, someone from outside of town to give us some counsel tonight but we have so many family here I thought we'd go ahead and do that first part right now. So with us we have Pastor Mays from the E. Reth County Cowboy Church. As always we appreciate what the Ministry Alliance does coming up here and praying north. I know y'all had your meeting and prayers today. I appreciate y'all.
All right. Psalm 1. How blessed is the one who does not walk in the counsel of the wicked nor stand in the path of sinners nor sit in the seat of scoffers but whose delight is in the law of the Lord.
Amen.
Would you pray with me? Father, we thank you for the government that you have blessed us with, the community that we get to live in and Father, these that give of their time and their talents and their wisdom to serve our community. Father, we thank you that we still live in a place where we know our neighbors, where a man's word is his bond and Father, where integrity still rules. Thank you, Father. Bless their decisions, their guide and guide their words and their thoughts and bless them in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Worth. Appreciate it. Next item we have BT Rhodes here. Where's BT? Darren.
Yes.
Coming up here. I'll let you receive for us tonight. Just want to mention that the Waste Connection, the guys that we pay that you pay to pick up your trash, they do a great job for the city of Steenville and they have for a long time raised money through a golf tournament. BT is a pretty good golfer. May cheat a little bit but he's a pretty good golfer.
Shh.
Okay.
There's your raise really in my ear.
And I'm going to let Darren talk a little bit about what it is that the funds are for.
So Waste Connections has been working with us what, for four years now? This is our fourth tournament and all the proceeds from this tournament are going to our all-inclusive playground in our city park and we are hopeful that this donation and hopefully a little more money that we've got to have in there will complete the final phase of that project. So we appreciate their partnership in this.
Sure. Thank you a lot. BT won't let me on his team because I'll win. Thank you so much for what y'all do. Is $33,000 in the pocket? Do you send that money?
You said you were managing.
Of course. Okay.
We're going.
Appreciate you.
He just makes that back, I think.
Okay. Thank you. Next we have a presentation from the Steenville Police Department on a Life Saving Award. Chief.
Yes, sir.
There you go. I'll turn it over to you.
Approximately one year ago Officer Dylan Scott, Officer Marina Browder and Sergeant Alan Williamson were dispatched to an open 911 emergency call at a residence here in Steenville. With open 911 calls, the caller is unable to advise the telecommunicator of exactly what is occurring, most often due to a multitude of reasons. Oftentimes they may not want anyone to know they have called 911 for fear of immediate harm. But in the background SPD telecommunicator Anna Burke could hear an emotionally distraught female describing a gun being involved and possibly being pointed at her. Officer Scott arrived first on the scene, drew his duty pistol and attempted to get someone to open the door. Upon hearing screaming inside the residence, he stepped back to kick open the door when the female caller opened it. It should be noted that Officer Scott would later describe the immeasurable value of telecommunicator Burke as he listened to her via his portable radio earpiece. Officer Scott immediately entered the residence and the caller pointed to the kitchen where a male subject later identified as a relative was located. Male subject was holding a handgun. Officer Scott ordered the male subject to drop the weapon and he refused. The male subject then shot and killed himself. From the time Officer Scott entered the residence to the time the shot was fired were approximately six seconds of time elapsed. Officer Scott immediately and without hesitation placed himself in harm's way to stop the threat, to protect an innocent woman and many children who were in the home. The heroic actions of Officer Scott are exemplary of the top-notch professionalism of the men and women of the Steenville Police Department. Tonight Officer Scott is receiving the Steenville Police Department Life Saving Award. His wife will place the medal on him with his parents. Please join me in recognizing his great work. Let's make some pictures. Mr. Mayor, would you like to join?
Sure. going to come up here tonight and show off.
My favorite officer. You too, Dylan Scott. He made him work and train today on his birthday.
Always working.
I don't know if we could get by singing happy birthday to him.
That's good.
Could y'all help me do that?
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday dear Rolo. Happy birthday to you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Well, he may not be your favorite but he's the prettiest one to police fart.
Yes, sir. No, no. It's good work, Rolo.
Thank you for your service, Officer.
Thank you.
With that, we're going to step into, we said we're going to read this right. In accordance with the, oh, that's not it. Compliance to the provisions of the open Texas Open Meetings Law, subchapter D, Government Code, Vernon's Texas Codes annotated in accordance with section 551.071, consultation with attorney to consult over pending or contemplated litigation. We'll be back when we get back.
Back into session. There was nothing in executive session to be discussed in public, so the next item is general, citizens' general discussion, and I have two people who want to present tonight. One of them is Wendy from the Gazette. Wants to make a presentation.
Citizen.
The Dublin Citizen, excuse me. She's been very faithful being here in reporting on us. Been fair about it, too.
Well, appreciate that. So, one of the things that we love to do as a small-town newspaper is offer our student-journalist opportunities to cover things in real life. And so, for the next three months, give or take, Colton Bradbury is going to be covering Stevieville City Council. He is a senior at Charlton Journalism Major. He is the opinion editor for the student newspaper. And a lot of times, I had told him this a while ago, I'm very shocked when people come to me and say, "Oh, I'm interested in government. That's what I want to cover as a journalist." We just don't get those people, and that's what he wants to do. So, not sports, not air culture, not that there's anything wrong with those subjects, but... So, he is going to be covering you guys, overseen, of course, by myself and his advisor, Austin Luter. So, if you guys have any questions, you can reach out to us or to him, and he will be bringing your city council for you.
First name again?
Colton.
Colton. Congratulations and welcome to Stevieville, Texas City Council. Everybody here will answer your questions if you have any, give us a buzz.
I appreciate it.
First contact would probably be that lady right there. She's the city secretary, but you... All of our phone numbers are posted on the website.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Thank you very much. Next one is Julie Herring. She wants to talk to us about a subject... I asked the chief here to stand by.
Yes, this is my first council meeting to attend, and I'm glad I can have a moment to speak.
Absolutely.
I'd like to take this time to introduce myself and say a thank you. My name is Julie Herring, and I'm relatively new in the Stevieville community. And as soon as I moved here, I noticed that what seems to me is a noise problem that's caused by a... I'm not sure if I'm using the right words, but I think they may be called ninja motorcycles or just other revved-up trucks and cars. And I mailed all of you and some of the other leaders of the city a letter about this, and I hope that you received it, and now you know who sent it to you. And I was so encouraged, I wish Mr. Dean Power was here tonight, but he responded an email and said that he actually, kind of on a coincidence, spoke with Chief Harris about this situation. And apparently, him and his crew were already addressing the situation. In fact, now, I don't really want to quote, I don't want to misspeak for Mr. Power, but he did state that they were even ticketing some of the drivers. And if I can just explain, I guess, I'm not trying to get rid of any vehicles, I'm just concerned that people are using them improperly, and I think it would just be so wonderful to have a more pleasing community if we had that under control. I know that there are at least two ordinances that are already in effect. One is offenses against public peace, and another, excuse me, is noise as a nuisance. Well, I'm very thankful for the results. I'm already noticing where I live, have less of that extensive noise. And I hope you, as a council, with the authorities, will keep enforcing the rules and monitoring the situation. And thank you again for caring about me and the whole Stevieville community in this regard. Thank you.
Well, I did receive your letter, thank you. I've asked the chief to come up and speak about the issue.
Oh, wonderful.
We all talked with him after we received our letter, and by the way, since Mr. Power is in here, we do speak negatively against him all the time, so it'd be all right. It wouldn't hurt anybody's feelings. It wouldn't hurt his feelings. Chief.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, ma'am. So, one of the most difficult enforcement actions that we have to take is against one of those motorcycle... They're dangerous, they're... They run from us. They also utilize license plate flippers, so they flip the license plate with their back leg or electronically, where you can't read the license plate. So, we've met with the county and district attorneys, and we have also tasked our sergeant of our traffic division, Sergeant Robert Moore, and I'll introduce... I'll get to him to come visit with you also. We'll both visit with you and talk about what we're doing. But I too hear them every night, too, in the evenings, and understand how dangerous that is as we listen to that. So, part of our tasking is, is we're trying to meet with everyone, and a lot of them are Charlton students, but not all of them. And so, that sometimes becomes a challenge for us, but we're identifying them, we're identifying all their motorcycles, and then so we're taking enforcement action in a safer way other than pursuing them, whether that's issuing a citation via veil or even warrants for their arrest. But if any of them remotely happen to be listening on Facebook right now or watching us, to know that...
Your name is...
That we're also with the court system and judicial system, looking at seizing their motorcycles. And so, we... It's a big tasking to take on, but we take it very seriously, the safety and love protecting and serving you and everyone here, and we'll continue to do that, and I'll keep you posted on our progress when it comes to enforcement.
Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
And I do care about them as well.
We do, too.
Very... It has to be very dangerous to be...
I've personally stopped one for a seventy and a forty in my vehicle, and she was a high school, seventeen-year-old high school student. And so... But her mom also rides those motorcycles, so we have a lot of work to do, our school resources, our officers are helping with that, but at least that they... It ended safely, and she stopped immediately for me.
Yes, I hope the council will give you the power, the...
Oh, ma'am, they...
...to be able to do this extra work.
They take great care of us, yes, ma'am.
Okay, good.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, chief.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Next item is a regular agenda, is consider approval of the contract with E. Rath County for election services.
Mayor and council, so every year we contract with E. Rath County Clerk's Office to contract our general and any special elections that we may have. So, we're just asking for approval of this year's contract.
Questions? Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I make the motion that we agree upon the contract with E. Rath County for election services.
Second. I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item, general election.
All right. So, we are asking that you order the election for city council. It will be May third, 2025, for place one, place three, place five, and place seven.
Questions?
Are there any opposed races yet?
No, sir.
If there are no opposed races, then we could cancel this. We wouldn't have to hold the election, is that correct?
Correct. So, we do have to order it, and then the application is open through February fourteenth at 5:00 p.m., and after that, we'll know if we can cancel it or if we will be having an election.
Do I hear a motion?
Mayor, I move that we approve the order of election as presented.
Second.
Have a motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item, consider approval and assessment resolution for steering committee for cities served by Encore.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the city is a member of one hundred and sixty-nine -member city coalition known as the Steering Committee of Cities Served by Encore. Sometimes you guys see correspondence, or they'll ask us to pass resolutions. So, when utilities... We also joined up also for one for Atmos. When large utilities want to file increases in rates and those things, instead of us kind of fighting that on our own, we're a member of a big coalition that helps cities manage these kind of efforts. And so, we're asking for approval for a resolution that their assessment to us is based on eleven cents per capita, per person, based on population numbers. That works out to $2,414 is what they put in the invoice, and then we would continue that membership.
Questions? Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I make the motion we approve Resolution 2025-R-2.
Second.
I have a motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item is the police profiling, racial profiling report. I should have just moved that ahead so you didn't have to get it down.
Sure. Mr. Mayor, distinguished members of the council, tonight I present our 2024 racial profiling report in accordance with state law. SPD has in the past and continues engaging Dell Carmen Consulting LLC to perform audits in a manner that is consistent with normative statistical practices, and they have produced this report that you have on the agenda and attached in the packet. A more detailed and reliable analysis of every one of our 2024 traffic stops. The data included in this report demonstrates that SPD has complied with the state of Texas racial profiling law and all emphasis on all of its requirements. Furthermore, we have a comprehensive racial profiling policy, which is at the back of this report. We offer information to the public on how to file a complaint or a complaint against any of us. We commission quarterly audits with Dell Carmen Consulting, and we ensure racial profiling is not tolerated. Mr. Mayor, distinguished members of council, I monitor report that during calendar year 2024, the top-notch men and women professionals of the Stevieville Police Department, we have received zero racial profiling complaints against us. And that is... That is a big deal for us. No complaints. In 2024, let me tell you a little bit about our stops. And if you're following along in the report, it's on page thirteen, but in 2024, we conducted 7,312 traffic stops. So, three percent increase over last year while we were suffering some staffing issues during that time. Again, mentioned page thirteen on the report reflects some of the categories, and I'll start with the race chart and break that down for you. Out of the 7,312 traffic stops, twenty-three stated that they were Alaskan natives or American Indians, fifty-four that they were Asian or Pacific Islanders, three hundred and twenty-six black, one thousand three hundred and forty-three Hispanic or Latinos, and 5,566 were white. In only 680 of the 7,312 stops, did officers know the individual's race prior to the stop, reflecting that 6,632 times, officers did not know the violator's race prior to the stop. Continuing on, of the 7,312 traffic stops, we issued 5,473 were warnings, 1,609 were citations. We arrested 230 individuals as a result of these traffic stops. Of the 7,312 traffic stops, we conducted 411 searches, we seized one hundred... Made 122 drug seizures, thirteen weapon seizures, forty-four alcohol seizures, one currency seizure, and one stop resulted in the recovery of stolen property. Of the 7,312 traffic stops, one stop resulted in bodily injury that was minor to the violator when we had to use physical force to take that person into custody. In conclusion, the Stevieville Police Department is committed to complying with the Texas racial profiling law and serving as top-notch law enforcement professionals who have a zero tolerance to racial profiling. If there's any questions, I would be happy to answer them now.
Questions for the chief.
Thank you for doing such a great job in your department.
Yes, sir.
Again.
There's a lot of detailed information in there, should you have time to look at that, how it's broke... All stops are broken down.
Just want to mention, there was a young lady who exercised her First Amendment rights and gathered grip yesterday.
That's great.
And did a protest, and I pat her on the back for her political engagement. But I want to say especially thanks to you and all your staff for the way you handled that. Robert had a fire truck out there scared the hound out of me, that when it comes, that big truck comes wheeling down all the lights are going, maybe someone got hit, but I appreciate you doing...
No injuries, sir.
You did a great job, and all of your staff did a great job keeping everybody safe. And thank you for doing that. Appreciate the young lady working with you, I want to make sure that was safe.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Please express to your department our appreciation for their professionalism, the way they deal with all of the citizens, no matter. And sometimes they're put, as that young man was that was here earlier, they're put in extremely dangerous, but extremely stressful situations, and split-second decisions have to be made. And please express our appreciation for how well they take care of all of them.
Yes, sir. Will do. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next item, consider approval of proposal about Techline Sports Lighting. I guess that's Darren. There you are.
Yes, sir. You should have in your packets a outline of what Techline has provided us with and what we're wanting to do. So, that specific project is the OYC complex, our Optimus Youth complex. That's where all of our T-ball, all of our eight-and-under baseball, so your coach pitches, your blast ball, T-ball, all that stuff is played in that complex. That is a majority of our leagues. What we've started doing, because we put a lot of time and effort into building fences on that complex in-house, we've done a lot of... Lot of work to those fields over the last couple of years. Our tournament provider has started using that as a tournament venue. Because it does not have lights, we have to limit the amount of tournament play we can do on it. And so, what you have before you is a bid to put lighting on that field and make that a more tournament-friendly venue. It's 229,000. The money for that project is going to come from bond proceeds from 2022 as a part of our sports venue tax, and so we're just asking for approval tonight to move forward with that project.
Questions for Darren.
Mr. Russell, can you tell us some of the economic impact that these tournaments have on the city?
Man, I can tell you that when we have these tournaments, we're extremely full in the city, as restaurants and all those stuff, you're going to see these kids out. We have... I'm trying to think how many weekends we're doing in the spring. Probably about thirteen total tournaments this spring. Over the last year that we have had an agreement in place with small-town select tournaments, we ourselves, because we now provide the manpower to do the parking and regulate people getting in. So, we sell ti... We sell parking now for these, or we sell tickets, however they want to term it, to get in that. I think we are at about $50,000 in revenue on our side after expenses that we are sitting aside, and we're going to put that back into these facilities as well. So, the tournaments are bringing in a lot of money, they're bringing in a lot of people, and people seem to be generally happy with our fields, the quality of our fields and where we're at, and it's just another step to improve that and make our fields better and more playable.
With the lighting, do you anticipate more overnight visitors?
So, we've already done lighting in the rest of the park, so this is one... This is one four-field complex that we didn't light in the original plan. We lit the rest of the park. So, every light has been changed, except for this park never had lighting.
Okay.
And so, this will bring in additional teams, because that park right now can only hold a certain number of teams, because you have to play everything before dark. And so, it will bring in some additional teams and some additional revenue. And we've got other plans for that, too. So, the part of this is we are... We're currently in the end of the architecture piece, about to go out to bid on a field project. So, our NYC complex has two fields currently, we're about to go to three, and this is the remainder of that money. So, we're going to... We're going to do field three, and then this money is going to go to offset that. So, with the addition of that field and the lights on this field, we'll be able to host a lot more teams.
Other question. Go ahead.
How soon do they anticipate having a light up?
We're hoping by April.
Anybody else?
I apologize if you said it, and I missed it, I was looking through the specs, but this was funded from where?
Bond proceeds from 2022.
In 2022, we issued two million off of the sports venue tax that's being collected. The two primary projects of that, one was the... The other ballfield lighting, it was approximately a million dollars, and the other big set aside was for the addition of a 300-foot baseball field over on the NYC side. He's very close to getting that bid out for construction, but there are some timelines with debt obligation money, and so he's been putting together other projects. We feel confident, we can certainly fit this one in, and kind of feel like that's a priority to continue that momentum with the increase in tournaments and people coming to town.
That's what I thought, just wanted to make sure.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to move that we approve the lighting project that costed $229,000 as has been requested.
Have a motion as second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Next item, consider approval of a Public Works On-Call Contract. Nick, you're always spinning money.
I just like that Nick's always on call.
Both of those are true, yes, sir.
He is.
You don't know by...
Mr. Mayor, council, this is the On-Call Public Works Construction Items Contract, and if it sounds familiar, it is, we did this very thing back in November, but what we found was there were several items in there of the three bidders that we had that actually bid this, for example, using units of square feet instead of square yards like it called out. So, what happened was their prices were extremely low, and so, as we would try to put work directives together, they would simply say, "No, we can't..."
do it for that. No, thank you. So we went out to bid again, and this time we actually got five contractors to submit bids. Uh, this time it was Cruz Hernandez Concrete Construction, Jay Mills Sullivan Contracting, Triple C, and West Hill Construction. So we've done this sort of thing before in the past since 2017, and what happens is, what we'll do is we'll go down all of the lists to identify which vendors provide the best price for each project, and then we'll compile that project. Whichever project has the lowest overall cost, that's the contractor that we'll use for that. And so this provides us an opportunity to put together these projects very quickly and efficiently and pick the best value and lowest bidder for these. We typically use this for curb and gutter and sidewalks and things of that nature.
Questions for?
So we haven't received any bids yet?
We have received bids, yes. This is a request to award it. What, what we're requesting is that we, we actually award all of the bid items to all of the contractors, and that allows us to put together the individual projects using the low bids for each one. All five vendors actually have, uh, the lowest bid on one or more items throughout. There's 59 individual items. So we have a lot of asphalt items, fog seal, chip seal, and, uh, just various items. So there's a lot of no bids for individual contractors. Concrete contractors aren't bidding on the asphalt pieces and vice versa.
Jason, how do we make that motion?
As presented, I would say, uh, that you moved to approve as presented. Award the bid as presented.
Do I hear a motion?
I moved to award the, uh, On-Call Contract as presented.
I'll second.
Do you have a motion as second? Any, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thanks, sir.
Yes, sir.
Report you had long.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it. Then we have Steve. Mr. Killen.
Hello, Mayor and Council. Um, just four short items tonight.
There you go.
Um, want to say thank you to City Manager for giving me, uh, latitude to be out last month. So, uh, thank you for that, and.
He did a pretty good job.
He did a great job. I, I was, uh, taking the opportunity to move my son back to Texas from New York City, so it was a, it was a priority for me. So appreciate the latitude on that. Uh, first case is RZ 2025-001. It's Mr. Jason Nitsky representing Horton Commercial Properties LLC. He's requesting a rezone for 791 North Clinton, which is parcel 33319 of the Shepherd Collins, block 14, lots 12 and 13, City of Stevieville. Mr. Nitsky has a conceptual plan. I included that in the packet. He is asking, uh, for this rezone to the R2.5 for the smaller lot dimensions that would allow him to build four duplex units on this property. Uh, we did have one unit of, or one letter of support, uh, for this case. It was from Mr. Ed Horton, and, um, we had one family show up at the Planning and Zoning Commission, mainly had questions about Mr. Nitsky's site plan. Uh, one thing about this is that the, um, the site plan allows for a lower density than what's currently zoned. It's currently zoned R3, so it could be 24 units per acre for apartments. Mr. Nitsky is wanting to reduce that down to basically four duplex units, so a much lighter density in the neighborhood, was very happy to hear about that. Planning and Zoning Commission convened on January 15th, 2025, and by unanimous vote, recommended the City Council approve the rezone request. Mr. Nitsky is here if you have any questions of him, and with that, Mayor, uh, Council will be glad to answer any questions. Thank you.
You can make a presentation, Mr. Nitsky. You're welcome to. You don't have to.
I don't.
Okay. Questions for Steve?
Uh, Mr. Killen, these, these appear to me to actually front on Shirley Street. Am I looking at that correct?
That is correct. Yes, sir.
But the lot is technically addressed, I guess it's the way to say it, on Clinton Street.
Correct.
Okay. Will, will there be any issues or problems with making the setbacks with the conceptual plan that he has for?
So, great question, and he will have to come back with a replat. We did go to Board of Adjustment just to kind of get a, um, some direction from them on if they would be willing to, to grant the, the variance for the depth of the lot once it is facing Shirley. They did grant it for the entire parcel, but once we get that, uh, plat from Mr. Nitsky, we'll have to come back and have each, um, each lot as platted facing Shirley Street approved for a variance on that depth. So he is looking at a, about a 13-foot depth, uh, reduction, uh, for those lots, uh, on the duplex dimension, which is still 75 by 100. What it does, though, in the R2.5 zoning is allowed for a smaller setback front and rear, so he'll be able to get these structures on there, um, with the footprint he's proposing. And the neighbors, um, were also, um, aware of that through the Board of Adjustment meeting and, and understood the, the issue there with the plat. And again, no, no real opposition spoke against his project.
Great.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Hearing now, we'll enter a public hearing on case number RZ 2025-001. Anybody want to come speak in favor or in opposition to the proposal? Seeing now, we'll close the public hearing and consider approval of ordinance rezoning property located at 791 North Clinton Avenue being parcel R33319 of S570 Shep, Shepherd and Collins. Anybody want to make a motion?
I move that we approve ordinance number 2025-0.
Three.
Three. Which is the ordinance rezoning the land, uh, from multifamily to integrated housing or 2.5. Excuse me, four.
There, a second.
Second.
And a motion as second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Congratulations, sir. Build some more house, we can tax it.
You're a heck of a builder, Nitsky, but you don't want to get up and talk.
Appreciate you, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you all.
Next item, Steve.
Thank you, Mayor. Case 2025-002. It's a rezone applicant is Shannon Hammond representing Team S and K Enterprises LLC. This is for 230 Charlton, which is parcel 78009 of the City Edition Block 63, Lot 23. He's asking for a rezone from B1 Neighborhood Business to Central Business District. The applicant is requesting a rezone for, uh, well, basically, you might recall that we had a, uh, a replat and a rezone request for the property on the corner, uh, adjacent to this property, and then this, this property was replatted, and they're basically, since that time, their business model has evolved, and so they're looking at the B3 list of conditions to, uh, maybe add a few more options for them as they try to determine what they're going to do moving forward. Uh, you may recall, this is the old-school site and referred to as the beach house, oldest house in the city. Uh, according to what I researched, uh, the owners had indicated they have 100% interest in saving that structure, uh, when they did approach council in the past. So simply asking for a rezone from B1 to B3, and it would still comply with future land use according to the 2050, uh, comprehensive plan if we granted this rezone. I compared the B1 uses to the B3 uses. B3 will allow for more residential uses, also allows for sale of alcohol as permitted by the state. They haven't really indicated to me what they're wanting to do with the property, but, um, looking at the additional uses in the B3, I don't really see anything that would be all that much different than what's in the B1 list already as far as maybe what could be perceived as an invasive business. B1 list restaurant is an alcoholic, with alcoholic service, this B3 says any, any type of use that has a state-issued alcoholic license. So those were the distinctions I saw between the two. And with that, Mayor, I don't see Ms. Hammond here, but be glad to answer any questions.
Questions for Steve. Hearing now, we'll enter a public hearing on case number RZ, uh, 2025-002. Anybody want to come speak in favor or in opposition to the project? Hearing now, we'll close the public hearing and consider approval of the ordinance rezoning property at 230 Charlton, being parcels R78009 of the S2600 City Edition Block 63, Lot 23, Steve Oliver, Wright County. Uh, do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I make the motion, we approve ordinance 2025-0-5.
Second.
Have a motion as second. Any more discussion? Should have all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this is Sidewalk Waiver 2025-001. I can is Zane Cole for 185 Park or West Park Street, which is parcel 31466 of the Fry First Edition, uh, block 35, lot 7 and 8. You might recall that this property was recently rezoned to R2.5. The intended project is to allow the subdivision of that lot and the addition of a single-family lot using the smaller lot dimensions. That rezone was approved just here recently. Uh, Mr. Park is, or I'm sorry, Mr. Uh, Cole is asking for a waiver for the sidewalks, and I did place in the staff report a picture, uh, from Google Maps. Uh, there is, uh, no, there, no sidewalk in the immediate area, uh, but the Planning and Zoning Commission, when they convened on January 15th, 2025, by unanimous vote, did recommend that the City Council deny the waiver request as we are starting to see redevelopment more and more throughout the city. Spoke with the Public Works Department, and they concur with the planning and zoning recommendation. And with that, Mayor, be glad to answer any questions.
Do we still have the sidewalks share cost program?
Yes, sir.
And would, may, tell the people here what that is, how much that is.
So for residential property, it's 50/50 cost share, and the city will, uh, make an assessment of the sidewalk, and if it's in need of replacement, as long as that is, uh, contracted or built to city specifications and accepted and approved by the Public Works Department, city will issue a rebate up to 50%.
So in this case, if we don't approve the waiver, he could get, the developer could get half the price back.
Uh, that's, I believe that is correct.
General terms.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions for Steve?
What, what is the concern in going to sidewalk just because it's, ju, just because it's not common for the area is, is the, is the?
Believe that was, uh, the main issue mentioned was there's just no other sidewalk in the immediate vicinity.
Okay.
Other questions? Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I make the motion, we deny the, uh, waiver as presented.
Second.
And a motion as second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The denial is.
Denied.
Don't make a dink, double dink of it there. Okay, Steve.
Mayor, the next case is, uh, for a curb and gutter waiver, same property, same situation. We did have one letter of opposition, uh, from an adjacent property owner. He indicated when he did business with the city, we required him to put in the curb and gutter, and he would like to see the curb and gutter, um, completed throughout the area. Um, again, there's a, an image there of Google Maps. You'll see that curb and gutter on the south side of Park Street. I did visit with the Public Works Department, and they concur with the recommendation made by P&amp;Z, which is a unanimous, uh, vote to recommend the City Council deny the waiver request. Answer any questions.
Questions?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we, uh, deny the request.
Mr. Mayor, can I make a statement real fast?
Absolutely.
Before we vote? I would just like to say there's a reason why we have this, uh, ordinance, and, and we are trying to make our city a walkable city, and I believe that we have this for a reason, and I just don't see any reason in every, ever approving a waiver on this demise.
Anybody else?
Well, yes, to follow up on that, we have talked about this actually for years with regard to waivers that have been granted in the past and, and whatnot around town. And, uh, it, uh, it is on our books to, that we require both sidewalks and curb and gutter and, and everything, and, and the only way that the community, even though there are no other sidewalks around, is someday there will be, and you just have to do it a little piece at a time, and that's the way you do it. And we thought we could mitigate, uh, the cost on it by, uh, city paying for half of the cost. And, and so I think we've gone above and beyond being able to do that and everything. This is the right way and the right thing to do, uh, is to go ahead and build the curb and gutter, build the sidewalks, because it makes the town, and it makes properties, frankly, a lot more valuable.
I just wanted to be careful, though. We have had some cases where we waived, such as off of 914, or a setback from the state. The sidewalk would be, what was it, 40 feet or so from the center of the highway, and it's over there in the, in the ditch, and we've done some, so I would just, I would be cautious for us not to just say blanketly, we need to not ever consider those. So I encourage citizens to come back and ask for it if they think that's appropriate. But I think both of y'all's points are well-taken. I just don't want us to say never, and citizens just say, well, this council will never consider it. All right, with that in mind, we have a motion as second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The denial is approved. Is that right, Randy? Is that the good grammar?
That's good. Denial's denied.
The denial, no, that, no, that would be the other way.
Wouldn't be right.
That wouldn't be right either. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
Request is denied.
There you go.
Request is denied.
All right, Mr. Nix, you're up.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. The Public Works Committee met on January 21, uh, with all members present. Uh, first item we considered was a request from, uh, E. Wright County Habitat for Humanity. Mr. Morrison presented a compelling request for the city to partner with them in the development.
Did you get checks from anybody up here? Okay, don't, don't embarrass anybody yet. All right.
In the development of some lots that had been donated to them, uh, there, they currently have no other lots in the city that are appropriate for them to develop. This would give them the potential to develop six specific lots for, uh, future homes to be built. They came, uh, to the city and asked for the city to help with the installation of water sewer. I suspect stormwater also, as well as doing the pavements for that. The approximate cost for, uh, all of the city's work, I believe, is $214,000. After discussion, the committee voted unanimously to approve that recommendation or to submit that recommendation with a positive recommendation to the council, uh, for council approval for a partnership with Habitat for Humanity. Mayor, I would make the motion, uh, to agree with the recommendation of the committee to approve this request for this partnership between the City of Stevieville and, uh, E. Wright County Habitat for Humanity.
Second.
Uh, motion as second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. I'll just call out, I haven't sent you my check, and I promised you one. David had sent you his check, and he promised you one, so we'll send you a check. And everybody else up here? There you go. Okay, Mr. Nix, continue.
Second item on my, our agenda that night was an amendment to the Jacobs slash CH2 OMI proposed agreement. It is amendment number 18. This is an annual evaluation of our contract with Jacobs for the operation and maintenance of our wastewater treatment plant. Uh, they asked for a 5.84%, and Mr. Williams, and was able to negotiate them down to a 3% increase. That is, in fact, a $21,528 increase from last year, resulting in an annual operational cost of 1.008434 wastewater treatment plant operations for the year. Uh, there was, uh, a budget issue that would, that will be resolved with funding that is in the va, available, uh, but the $1,8,430 is what the contract will be. Uh, after discussion, the committee voted unanimously to recommend approval of this contract amendment to the council, and I would make the motion to approve amendment number 18 to the contract with Jacobs CH2MOMI for the operation of our wastewater treatment plant.
Second.
And a motion as second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
That is all that I have for tonight, Mayor.
Mr. Cook?
Yes, sir. Development Services Committee, we, we, uh, we met, we discussed, uh, frankly, um, an item that we had discussed before, and that is, um, that in November of 24, the committee asked the staff to prepare a draft revision, uh, to the land use regulations for the B2 retail commercial district that would allow auto paint and body shop repair as a conditional use, not as a, a use of right, but is a conditional use, so that each one would have to come before, uh, the council, uh, for approval. Uh, they, the staff did provide overview of the proposed, uh, revisions. Uh, after some deliberation, the committee, by unanimous vote, uh, asked that the, the revisions, uh, be sent to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a public hearing, uh, and, uh, subsequently coming back to the council here for a final determination. Uh, that hearing is going to be on the 19th, I believe, of, uh, of this month, and so that means it will come back to this council, uh, in our first meeting in March. our first meeting in March. So, that's all of our reports, sir.
Ms. Smith.
Well, January twenty-first, the nominations committee met and discussed a few open positions we had on, on citizens' board. We had one open spot on the library board, two open spots on the Main Street Advisory Board, and two open spots on the Tourism and Visitors Bureau Advisory Board. So, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the nominations as presented in the packet.
Second.
Have a motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. That's your entire report.
That's it. That's all I've got for you guys.
Ms. Durfee.
Thank you, Mayor. The Tourism Board met, excuse me, and, I'm so sorry, we voted to add Caitlin Moyer to our Western Heritage Advisory Board, and so I would make the motion that we put Caitlin Moyer as the executive for the Western Heritage Advisory Board.
Second.
Have a motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
And that's all I have for you.
Ms. Harris.
Council Mayor, this is the monthly budget review for the period ending December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four. We're three months into our fiscal year. Things are about as we had anticipated, or a little bit better. We received two-point-eight million in our property taxes in December, which is three-hundred-and-seventy-seven thousand increase over the funds collected last fiscal year to date. We have collected fifty-three percent of our budget, which is about five-hundred-and-fifty thousand more than anticipated. I think we had a lot of people that decided to go ahead and pay a little earlier than we expected. We received seven-hundred-and-ninety-nine thousand in sales taxes in December, which is twenty-two thousand or one percent more than the funds collected last fiscal year to date. We have collected twenty-seven percent of our budget, which is only about thirty-three thousand higher than anticipated. Of the twelve million dollars revenue received to date, sixty-two percent was received in our general fund, and twenty-six percent was received in our water wastewater fund, four percent was received in our landfill fund, excuse me, and three percent was received in the stormwater drainage fund. We received thirty-one percent of our total budgeted revenue through December. That's one-point-three million more than anticipated, excuse me, due to taxes, licenses, and permits in our interest revenue. We received five-hundred-and-sixty thousand more revenue through December than last fiscal year to date, and that's due to taxes and charges for services. Sorry. Of the ten million dollars spent to date, fifty-three was, percent was expended in our general fund, forty-one percent was expended in our water waste fund, water wastewater fund, and four percent was expended in the landfill fund. We've expended twenty percent of our total budgeted expenditures through December. It's one-point-five million less than anticipated due to person, personnel contractual capital outlay and grant dispersments. We spent eight-hundred-and-forty-two thousand more in expenditures through December than last fiscal year to date, and that's due to personnel contractual maintenance and capital outlay. CETA has received an overall twenty-eight percent of budgeted revenue through December, which is seven thousand less than last fiscal year to date, and eight thousand more than anticipated due to taxes and interest income. And CETA has spent an overall nineteen percent of their budgeted expenditures through December, which is sixty thousand, excuse me, sixty thousand more than last fiscal year to date, due to capital outlay, and sixty thousand less than anticipated due to contractual capital outlay and grant dispersments. Any questions?
Questions, Veronica.
Thank you for what you do, Veronica.
You're welcome. We'll go ahead and go on to the quarterly investment report. Our total market value of cash and investments on December thirty-first was forty-four million seven-hundred-and-forty-nine-thousand-four-hundred-and-eighty-one dollars. This is allocated ten percent in our demand accounts, two percent in cash and money market accounts, four percent in certificates of deposits, thirty-nine percent in Techstar Investment Pool, and forty-five percent in our Tex Pool Investment Pool. We earned five-hundred-and-ten-thousand in interest for the quarter. The average yield to maturity for all account types for the quarter was four-point-six-one percent. Just on the investment accounts was four-point-eight percent. The average yield to maturity for a three-year treasury bill, which is our benchmark, was four-point-four percent, and our average weighted maturity in days of the portfolio is three-point-five-nine, so we're extremely liquid.
Questions? Thank you, ma'am. Next item is consent agenda. There are motions.
Mr. Mayor, I make the motion we approve the consent.
Well, Leanne, just, I'll get you into this one. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Ms. City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, council, city offices will be closed on Monday, February seventeenth, and observance of President's Day, and I believe that's all I have this evening.
Leanne.
I was just going to remind everybody that this Friday night at five-thirty, we're having another alley bingo, and it will be held right behind us at the alley between the side Hearsay Wine Bar. That starts at five-thirty, and if you didn't come last time, please come this time. It was so much fun. Great prizes, great food. It was, it was a great time. And then, March first, we have our first farmer's market, Wings, Wheels, and Wonders, and that will be at Stevieville Clark Airport, excuse me, from nine to two, and there'll be the farmer's market, free breakfast, planes, lots of fun things. So, hope everybody will come out and enjoy the day.
Mr. Cook.
Oh, just to follow up on that, as a matter of fact, I understand, the rumor is that there's going to be like fifty-two different booths going on out there, which is fantastic. I remember, I went out there last year with a car and, and everything. I've never seen so many classic cars and things like that that here in town before, and it was a lot of fun, and, and a lot of booths out, and just, and wonderful planes coming in, you know, and it was just really neat, really neat. It's really something to go see. If you haven't been, it, it would be really good to do. Big shout-out to our, our police department, fantastic job. I think tonight was a, a special time, frankly, and a, and also a shout-out to Texas Health Resources, our hospital locally. Some of us have had the opportunity to be there with friends and relatives and things like that here in the last month, and, and they've done a fantastic job. And our president of the, of the hospital is going to be back with us and, and so forth, and so I think it's really a positive thing.
Ma'am, Ms. Smith.
This past week, Spar wrapped up its basketball season, and so I'd just like to take a minute to thank all the men and women who volunteered to coach the young men and women of Stevieville. I think it shows a lot for our community that we have so many people volunteering to put so much back into their youth. I'd also like to commend the Parks Department on selling out of their daddy-daughter dance, which is happening this Thursday or Friday. It just shows that there are lots of good things that are growing, going on down in our Parks Department, and Darren and his crew do an amazing job. I'd like to kind of follow up what Gerald said about thank you to our police officers, and that report that Chief Harris gave tonight, being a statistic on that report there. They, they do a phenomenal job, and they deserve all the accolades that they, they receive. And also, we still have a current couple positions still open on boards and commissions, so if you're interested in getting your feet wet with city government, you're more than welcome to go online, apply an application for a board of commissions. Thank you.
Yes, sir. I actually want to thank all the public safety for the work they continuously do. We're honored to have great people in our community, and especially for yesterday with the protest. Thank you for, for everything y'all did to make that peaceful and get through without any issues. In the January meeting, Ms. Smith and myself both thanked the Stevie Yellow Jackets and the, and the, or congratulated the Stevie Yellow Jacket football team and the cheerleaders for having a great season. I didn't realize that my daughter still had a cheer competition left, so I want to congratulate them for actually making it to the state finals and cheer competition this year, for this, the single household cheerleaders have ever gone in competition, so congratulations. And I'm going to prove to my wife that I wrote it down before she texted me to say that.
I saw you write, man.
Thank you. I took her pen like ten, fourteen minutes ago, so that's all there is. So, that's it.
Mr. Nix.
Mayor, I want to call the council's attention to something that happened last week with very little fanfare, something that we have been working on for probably the last two decades, something that will literally open up the potential for thousands of acres of development north, northeast, and east of the city of Stevieville. The East Side Sewer is operational. That, that, that transfer was made, and, and as I said, with little or no fanfare. Mr. Williams informed me that that was in progress, and he sent me a picture, and I'm not going to ask him what, to repeat the comment I made, but that's something that is literally monumental in this community because of the potential it will provide to serve so many more areas of the city than we have not been able to serve in the past. And I want to commend the council, this council and past councils, for being willing to fund and then stay with that project and get it completed. We have another area that we're looking at now to extend service farther out to the two-eighty-one corridor, where the development is going right now. That's going to come back to you soon, but remember the potential that lies out there in that area, and we're trying to tap into that and helping our city grow. And I, I want to thank our Public Works Department, and Mr. Williams specifically, because he's worked very diligently on that as his, as his whole department has, and I want to thank them. But the community needs to be proud of that, because it is a significant and, and a large piece of our infrastructure that has been added and improved, and will continue to serve us, Lord willing, for the next fifty to a hundred years.
We will, we need to talk to council afterwards about whether that kind of picture going over the airways is legal. What, I'm just, all right. One item is, y'all need to get ready. Leanne's got a big proposal going to come to us. It's a great idea. Just get excited. I'm really excited. I just want to make one comment. Jason and I were in Austin Wednesday last week, and met with, we got to listen to, actually met with and visited with the assistant, or deputy comptroller for the state of Texas. It's one of the only positions in Texas that is a government required, that the deputy can actually act for, completely act for the comptroller. And so she has a lot of authority, but he was gone doing something else. But they mentioned some things that I think that the citizens need to know. We, they projected, and correct me, I'm going to give round numbers, twenty-eight billion dollars in surplus funds from last year to this year that they're rolling money for. Twenty-eight billion dollars for them to spend. That doesn't count the rainy day fund. People get those confused. There's twenty-seven billion, I think, in the rainy day fund, and we're capped on how much they can spend by the constitution, which is, I think, ten per, two per, five, ten percent or something of what the funds are, so they could go up currently, I think, to thirty billion dollars. There's a motion that they're going to consider this, this year during the session, that would remove that cap, and they expect to put in the bank eighty billion dollars of funds for some rainy day event. And I'm just going to tell you, my personal opinion is, that's money we've been taxed on that's not being spent on things that are taxable in this, this city, and cities like us have billions of dollars of stuff that they could be using, helping us with infrastructure, et cetera. And so, that's just my personal belief, and so I'm just going to use my first vivid right. That's all I have. We've already done our executive session. It is seven-oh-nine, and we will stand adjourned. If there's nothing else on the agenda, thank y'all very much.